Ms. Angela, are we on?
The afternoon is now 3:00 PM on Thursday, May 16th, 2024. I'd like to call our fiscal year '24-25 budget work session to order. Madam Clerk, you take the roll, please.
Brannum.
Here.
Pugh. McBride. Livingston.
Here.
Tereshia. Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English. Newton. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to note that Vice Chair Pugh did notify me ahead of time that he would not be able to attend this evening. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. A.C.A. Thomas. A.C.A. Thomas, we have any additions, deletion?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion, is there a second? Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is Item 3, Grant Funds. A.C.A. Thomas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, Director Wilkerson, Budget Director, will be walking us through the grant funds. And we're happy to entertain any questions Council may have. Following that, we'll lead into Special Revenue. And then, lastly, this evening, we'll be on Capital Projects. If you will, please recognize Director Wilkerson.
Recognize.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of County Council. Thanks for having me here today. So, we are going to go over our Grants Funds, our Special Revenue Funds, and also, lastly, our Capital Improvement Plan recommendations. So, here's a little overview of the schedule. So, first, we'll talk about what we consider our internal grants. So, these are the grants that the county actually awards to agencies within Richland County. We'll go over that full process, and then we'll also talk about our external grants. And these are the grants that are actually awarded to Richland County from external sources. And we will finish up with Special Revenue Funds and Capital Improvement Plan. So, looking again at our internal grant process, here's our timeline and announcement process. So, between November and December of 2023, this is what we consider our pre-application process. And there was a public announcement about the FY 2025 H-Tax, ATAX, and SIG grant programs opening. If y'all recall, the H-Tax and ATAX process have kind of always followed these guidelines. The Community Impact Grant process adopted this from the Committee this year. So, this is the first time that it's followed the same process. So, from that standpoint, there were several email blasts that went out. Of course, social media announcements and a comprehensive announcement on the Budget Department's website. We also hosted two in-person grant workshops. That was on November 28th and 29th. And we did have 16 organizations and 22 people in attendance. And I would like to just take a moment to recognize the Budget and Grants team because they're actually here with us in the audience. So, this whole section right here is our Budget and Grants Department. They do a wonderful job, certainly helping out during budget season, but also, really, grants are a year-round thing, as y'all know, going forward. So, they really hit the ground running with the grant application process for an internal standpoint, but the external piece of that is really truly ongoing throughout the year. So, going forward through the application period, all grants are accepted via Zoom Grants, which is our online software. And that, for H-Tax and H-Tax, that opened up on December 4th and was open until February 4th of the current year. For SIG, that was a little bit of a shorter period from January 1 through February 4th. We had a total number of H-Tax applications of 70, which was actually almost double what we have received in the past. So, we're excited about that. We certainly think the public announcements and getting the word out helped with those applications. We saw 20 ATAX applications. And then, for our Community Impact Grants, we saw a total of 77 applications. So, after the application window closed, of course, our Grants Team reached out to our H-Tax and ATAX Committee members. And they were able to attend several of our review process. So, we had four out of four H-Tax Committee members that participated. And this was really a one-day opportunity. Well, with H-Tax, it ended up being two days because we had so many applications. But we allowed the organizations to come in and give a presentation to the Committee to just give further information and, of course, answer any questions that the Committee had on their grant application. From an ATAX standpoint, we had five out of our seven Committee members participate and review the applications. And then, we had a total of 15 ATAX organizations present and a total of 63 H-Tax organizations. So, special thanks to those Committees because that is an all-day process. This time, it was actually two and a half day process. So, they took time out of their busy schedules to actually sit in on these review periods. So, on the Accommodations Tax side, we did have, we looked at our revenues. Total, again, this is on the state side. So, it's total state accommodations taxes. The projection for the current, going into the new fiscal year, will be $640,000. We are projecting to use $135,000 of fund balance. And this is, of course, for the purpose of the Committee. The recommendation is to transfer $25,000 to the General Fund and $750,000 to the Grants. On Slide 8, you will see all of the Committees that were awarded in 2024. Also, the Committees that had received requests, we received requests from in 2025, and the recommendations from the Committee. So, in total, we received almost $1.8 million in requests. And the Committee ultimately recommends $750,000 of funding. And I'll pause here for any questions on ATAX. All right, thank you. All right, moving forward to our Hospitality Tax Funding. So, here, you'll notice our FY 2025 projection is a slight increase over our 2024 projection. This is based on year-to-date actuals and what we're actually collecting. This is a monthly 2% tax on prepared food and beverage. And so, we are seeing that projection tracking with FY 2025 projection. We are still projecting to use slight fund balance of 2.1 million to get a total budget of $12.6 million. And of that, there are several categories of expenditures for Hospitality Tax. The first one is our transfer out. Three and a half million is transferred out to the General Fund. This is in line with previous years. And then, of course, about 1.4, 1.5 million is transferred out for the debt service payment due on the Hospitality Tax bonds. Next, we have our Hospitality Tax Committee Recommendations. So, this year, due to the fund balance existing in Hospitality Tax, we did recommend that they up their recommendation from $500,000 to $600,000. And you'll see those recommendations on the next few pages. Additionally, we have projected that the Council H-Tax Discretionary Fund would stay the same. So, if y'all recall, that's roughly $82,000 per district. We also have the Council Appropriations for our Ordinance Agencies, Special Promotion Agencies, and Tier 3 Agencies. And we'll go through those in more detail next. And then, the last item is a capital project over at the Township. So, this project is something that has been gone, or I guess, talked about for a few years to pave the Township Auditorium parking lot. The original budget for this was about $1.8 million. And when they went to bid this out, they realized that that really would only pay for a gravel parking lot. And so, in order to really get this done correctly, they need more money. So, we are still keeping the $1.8 million in the capital projects, but supplanting that with an additional $1 million to get the full project done at the Township. So, in review of our Ordinance Agencies, so just as a reminder, our Ordinance Agencies, Special Promotions, and Tier 3 Agencies. So, all of these agencies are actually listed in our ordinances or by agreement. But the amount that is up for discussion is, of course, determined by County Council. So, the four organizations that we fund through an ordinance are the Columbia Museum of Art, Historic Columbia Foundation, Adventure, and the Township Auditorium. I do want to point out that Adventure, their normal request was $575,000. This is their annual request and in line with previous years. You'll notice it is a little bit higher for the current year. And if y'all recall, back in October, y'all approved $1.75 million over two years for a capital project for Adventure. So, we added half of that. So, that's why that increase went from $575,000 to 1.4 million. And then, looking at our Special Promotions, again, somewhat in line with the request from the previous year. We did look into some of the items that increased a little bit. So, one of those was certainly Columbia Museum of Art. They do provide a budget whenever they submit their application. And as part of that budget, they did request $1.45 million from Richland County and from the City of Columbia. And in looking at their budget, they are projecting that their admin, or I guess, admissions, sales, their fundraising, and their memberships down. So, this is the offset to that decrease. Additionally, looking at the Columbia Metro Convention and Visitors Bureau, so this is a higher request than the previous year from $275,000 to $500,000. And looking at their total budget, they did have a very large increase to their total budget of about 140%. So, that kind of lets you know why they did increase their request from Richland County. And then, lastly, you know, as we mentioned before, of course, the Committee request and then the H-Tax Discretionary Fund. I'll take any questions.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Recognized, Ms. Newt.
Thank you. Some of these questions may be outside of your purview, but I'm going to ask because we're talking about this. So, first, for the City of Columbia's request, you mentioned that they made a request of Richland County and of the City of Columbia. Do you happen to know if those were equal requests, or you're just saying that they made a request to both bodies?
So, for Columbia Museum of Art in particular, they were equal request. So, when they submit their budget, they show their full budget and their projection. So, they did break it down to, say, Richland County, $1.45 million, City of Columbia, $1.45 million. And then, they had, you know, other items, admissions, fundraising, membership were a part of their revenue budget. So, yes, that was shown in their budget that they submitted to Richland County, that they were the same.
Thank you. And then, you mentioned, so using the City of Columbia, no, using the Columbia Museum of Art as an example, that they submitted a budget with their request. Did all of the other organizations on this list do that as well?
Yes, ma'am, that's required in the application.
For every tier?
For, I definitely know for the ordinance agencies, I'm going to look back at my team on the others. Did they all submit a budget? I believe that's in that, I know that's in the application and in all of these submitted applications.
So, if they're an ordinance agency, they are not required to submit an application as an grant? They just submit an ask letter detailing an amount and they kind of justify that amount? But most of them do submit an application. I believe all of these lists.
I can repeat it. Is it already?
Director Wilkinson will repeat in a modified version to us.
So, as Matia, Ms. Pugh mentioned, she said that it is not a requirement to submit a budget if they are considered an ordinance agency because the County Council is required to fund them on some level. But she stated that most of them do provide a budget with their application.
Thank you. And then, part of my question, it actually wasn't limited to the ordinance agencies? So, we have these three tiers. And so, I'm really wondering about the Special Promotions and the Tier 3 Organizations, if they submitted budgets?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you to my team.
Elsma Weaver, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. So, on page 14, it says, "Reserve for contingency, $150,000." I noticed nothing was carried over into '25. Did we use the $150,000 from the contingency and what was it for?
No, so, that was really like a, I mean, it's a reserve account. So, looking at what's actually coming in for fiscal year '24, so that's the year that we're in, we do not expect to need that reserve contingency.
Okay, so where does that money go if it's left over, the $150,000?
It just goes into fund balance.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, and again, because it's a Special Revenue Fund, it is for a special purpose. So, most of the time, Hospitality Tax is for economic development-type purposes. So, it would just go into an assigned fund balance.
Okay. And then, the next page, page 15, the two Southeast Rural Community and Gateway Pocket Park Light, I noticed that they were allocated, or excuse me, the Gateway and Historical was allocated in '24 and '0 and '25 requested.
That is correct.
Did they just fade away, or they just didn't have any needs?
We did not receive a request from them.
May I? Yes, Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
We are the Historical Corridor and the Gateway Pocket Park Light Removal. That's the county. So, those are funds that we have previously allocated for initiatives. And so, we wouldn't have, I don't know that we have ever submitted an application to ourselves. But we have historically held those funds in the budget so that we can address those needs.
Okay. It was just a pending applicant?
It's Richland County. It's money that Richland County Council set aside in the budget for those uses.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Not yet.
So, the next few slides are actually the Committee's recommendations. So, these are the competitive grants that came through Zoom Grants, and the Committee decided as a whole to fund each of them on some, or fund the ones that have numbers in them on some level. And I'll be glad to discuss any here. You will notice that some of these, like Columbia Museum of Art, they also receive, because they're an ordinance agency, they also receive some funding from the Committee, since those are kind of two separate things. So, they did get additional funding there as well. And that's similar to Capital City, Lake Murray, a few of the other ones that are ordinance or special tier. So, again, the overall request for 2025 was almost $6.9 million, and the Committee recommends $600,000. All right. Moving forward to the Community Impact Grants. And again, just a reminder that this process is a little bit newer this year to follow along with the budget process. But we do hope that this continues to be similar to the H-Tax and ATAX and be a budget item each year. So, if y'all recall, Community Impact Grants were allowed a $1 mil value. And we did also use 10% of that mil value to hire a third party to review these applications. So, the total value for FY 2025 was $1,647,000. This was split between our community partners and then our competitive application process, with the community partners receiving 60% of the funding and the competitive applications receiving 40%. So, the Community Impact Grant Committee reviewed these applications and recommended the following. So, for our community partners, $988,200. And you'll see that they did have a slightly higher requested amount for community partners, but the recommendation was to stay within the 60% at $988,000. For the competitive application process, again, this is the 40% funding of that $1 mil value. And the total here is $658,800. And again, these were reviewed and voted on by the Community Impact Grant Committee. Any questions on SIG Grants? All right. Okay. Moving on to kind of what we consider our miscellaneous grants. So, these come from various different funds throughout the county. The first one, these do not have a formal application process. Usually, they just submit a letter to the county administrator with their request. The first one comes from our Stormwater Fund, and this is the Congaree Riverkeeper. The request for 2025 is $20,000. Keep the Midlands Beautiful, I believe y'all saw in your email this morning, this is funded through the Solid Waste Fund. And they kept their request the same as '24 for $42.9. The River Alliance is funded through temporary alcohol permits. They did increase their request to $70,000 from $55,000. Main Street District, this is another item that's funded out of the General Fund, along with Pathways to Healing. And they did increase their request from $47,500 to $50,000. And Pathways to Healing sent in a letter to the Administrator requesting $10,000. I did just want to asterisk Pathways to Healing because they are already a Community Impact Grant Partner. But overall, total request was $192,900. All right. On our Neighborhood Improvement Grant Process, so this program is administered by Community Planning and Development.
Chair Mackey. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Baron has a question.
Ms. Baron, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just real quick, there was a statement just made that Pathways to Healing is one of our community partners, and then they asked for additional funding as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is, I mean, I don't know, this might not be the time, but I actually would like to know, you know, what those funds are for, considering that they are one of our community partners? And then, some additional funds in the same pot of money, from the same pot of money?
Oh, ma'am. It would be a different pot of money. But we can request Administrator Brown share the request letter?
Yes, I'd like that, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so, looking at our Neighborhood Improvement Grants, so these, again, are internal grant opportunities for neighboring organizations. So, we do have two different funding opportunities. A Tier 1 can receive funding up to $1,500, a Tier 2 is up to $2,500. So, for the FY 2025 budget year, the total requested was a little over $100,000. And the recommendation from the Committee is to fund $92,249. And if you look in your recommended budget book, you can see all of the detail as far as those Neighborhood Improvement Grants. For the Conservation Commission. So, this grant program is also administered by Community Planning and Development and the Conservation Commission. The total request for fiscal year 2025 was a little over $416,000. And the recommendation by the Committee is to fund $250,000 in grants. And that's over the next few slides. Any questions on the Conservation Commission? All right. Next, we'll talk about the County External Grant Requests. And again, just as a reminder, these are actually grants that either the county applies for to receive these funding or comes from external sources. Some of these are new and some of these are continuation from previous years. There are times when the agency funds it at 100%, but there's also times where they also require a cash or in-kind match from the county. The total grant funding requested during fiscal year 2025 is a little over $203 million, which results in a possible total cash or in-kind match requirement of $1.3 million, or I'm sorry, $13.2 million. For the General Fund, that's about $1.3 million. And for the other funds, it's about $11.8. The recommendation to fund the cash match for the General Fund is right at $1 million, which is in line with previous years. The reason we don't fund it at 100% of the General Fund cash is because some of these grants, you know, if it's a federal grant especially, it's not going to be awarded until October. And so, that's, you know, roughly 75% of the year. So, you don't necessarily need that full $1.3 million to start at July 1. So, we feel like a million dollars kind of floating each year is sufficient to fund any cash matches that may come through from these grant opportunities. Madam Chair?
Recognized, Ms. Newton.
Thank you. Bear with me while I try to ask this question. When we look at this million dollars, are they going, is it going to be recognized on a grant-match budget line? Or would it be, for example, if we have to match personnel, it's going to be on the personnel line of the organization that's requesting it?
So, where we budget it is actually in a true line item in our non-departmental. But as it's needed, we actually transfer it out to the correct category. So, if it's a personnel, we would transfer it to their personnel budget. If it's like a capital, we would transfer it to the capital.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then, lastly, do certainly want to talk about our grant-funded positions because this is significant for the county and continuing to operate. So, for fiscal year '25, the recommendation is 58 full-time equivalents, which results in about $4.8 million in personnel cost. And that is, of course, detailed more fully in your recommended budget book. Are we ready to move on to Special Revenue Funds?
You're recognized, Mr. Livingston.
Yes, so, it is, I'm not sure of the exact percentage, but this is based off of the current year collections as well as last year collections. So, we are on track through April, or I'm sorry, we're only completely close out through March. But through March, we're on track to collect over $10 million. So, our budget was 8.4, but our actual collections are over $10 million. So, we're just making our projection match what's actually coming in. So, I think we were a little bit conservative in our fiscal year '24 budget. All right. So, the next few slides talk about our Special Revenue Funds. So, keep in mind, Special Revenue Funds are designed for a specific purpose. So, you have revenue that comes in that can only be used for a specific purpose. It could be designated by a grant, it could be designated by a state statute, it could be designated by the federal government. But that's kind of the basis behind why they're considered Special Revenue Funds. The first one is, of course, Economic Development. So, we do have information that came from the County Treasurer. So, the projection is based on fiscal year, or I'm sorry, tax year '23 collections. So, you'll notice that has decreased a little bit from our budget in '24. We also have a transfer in from the General Fund. So, this is a half a mil and I believe was approved a few years ago. So, I do have a slight increase there due to the value of a mil increasing with reassessment. So, you'll notice that slight increase. But as far the fund balance, again, that three and a half million is just carried forward from the current year because we do not expect to use that in the current year. The three and a half million is really reserved for the training facility that will be upcoming in the next year or so. Our emergency telephone revenue, we have seen some growth here. And so, I did increase the 911 tariff and the state appropriation based on what we were actually collecting in this budget. Additionally, you'll notice that we did decrease our use of fund balance. And then, we do have a transfer in that comes from our Fire Services Special Revenue Fund. From Fire Services.
Madam Chair.
Recognized, girl.
On the Fee and Lue line items there, I guess I'm just curious, is that revenue all of the Fee and Lue collections? Or is it just a portion that's kind of dedicated to economic development usage? I've worded that really poorly.
You have to calm down, Ms. Sorry, I called you, Ms. Turner, and I know you're not caring. I apologize.
So, what that should equate to is that's the 7% of fee revenue, negotiated fees after 2009. So, it's not the total fee agreement revenue, so it's just the 7% that goes to our office.
That answers it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Looking at our Fire Services, so this is funded primarily through property taxes. So, the auditor did provide the property tax growth numbers that you see there. And again, a slight growth from the previous year. We've already hit Hospitality Tax and Accommodations Tax previously, so I'll move forward to our Transportation Tax. The $96 million is certainly an increase from the previous budget. But again, this is something based on our actuals. So, we are seeing that we are collecting about, we get quarterly checks from the state, and we're seeing that we're collecting about a little over $24 million a quarter. So, that's what the $96 million budget there is based on. Additionally, of course, we transfer 28%, I think it's 28.13% to our Mass Transit. So, you'll see that in the line below, so that's that $27 million. And then, the next two are related to Neighborhood Redevelopment and the Conservation Commission. So, if y'all will recall, again, the Conservation Commission and Neighborhood Redevelopment are allocated at half a mil. So, again, this is based on the property values, and those numbers were provided by the Auditor's Office. From the public defender's standpoint, as a Special Revenue Fund, we did speak with our public defender, and it does not our public defender, and it does not appear that our state appropriation will increase in fiscal year 2025. So most of the funding here does have to come from the general fund. So this comes from a transfer, and certainly with increasing increases from our compensation plan, we do notice a little bit higher transfer in fiscal year '25. The next one I want to draw your attention to is Title IV for family court. So you'll notice that this is the first year that we have this as a special revenue fund. This is the federal funding that the clerk of court's office receives for what they handle within family court. Previously, this has been housed or housed under the general fund. And so in our discussion with the clerk of court and our auditors, it was recommended because this is federally funded that this should be a special revenue fund going forward. So we pulled out all revenues and expenditures related to family court and put those in a special revenue fund for the upcoming fiscal year. You'll see that it does not completely fund itself, so there is still a general fund transfer of 324,000 to make that special revenue fund whole. The last two items, school resource officers and victim's assistance. The budget office did work with the sheriff and fleet to capture all costs related to the SRO program and make sure that those contracts were updated accordingly. So we do feel comfortable with the, with numbers that we have for school resource officers. From a victim assistance perspective, we looked back the last couple of years and realized that we have not been historically collecting the fees and assessments at the budgeted rate. So the adjustment from 390,000 to 195,000 is based on actuals that we do receive in Richland County. So in order to make this fund whole, we had to increase the transfer from the general fund. Historically, it's been about right at 945,000. So we did have to increase that transfer to 1.2 million to fund the full victim assistance fund.
Recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you say the revenue, the revenue is from who? Is it the general fund or property taxes or the state or?
They're surcharges. I believe, are they magistrate? I believe they're through the magistrate's office surcharges.
Magistrate office surcharges, okay.
And they're, and they are continuing to go down each year. So every year that we, you know, of course, take a look at and do our projections, we're noticing that, like, last year it was 200,000. This year, it looks like it's going to be about 195,000 and can continue to decline.
Not aware of any magistrate fee, and I've picked plenty of them. I'm not sure where that comes from, okay? Just curious. I can follow up on an email later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we'll certainly look into that as well. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to our next page for the special revenue fund. So tourism development, that's our local accommodations tax. This is projected to be around 1.3 million. We also have our temporary alcohol permits. There is a slight decline here, and again, this is based on projections and what's actually coming in for the current year and the last few fiscal years. Both stormwater and, as mentioned before, Conservation Commission are based largely funded through property taxes. So you'll notice a slight property tax increase from, just from growth from the auditor's office. And the last large special revenue fund is our road maintenance fund, which is significantly funded through road maintenance fees. If y'all recall, we do have a large fund balance within this fund just due to not being able to do projects over the last couple of years. So we are requesting to use about 5.5 million of that fund balance to continue these road maintenance projects in the future. So overall, special revenue fund total of a little over 230 million.
Recognize, Ms. Newton.
Thank you. I just want to process this together regarding the road maintenance fee. So it says that we're projected to use about 5.5 million of fund balance. And so looking here, what is the remaining fund balance going to be?
So I don't have it for the current year. I can tell you last year, they had a fund balance, so as of June 30th of 2023, it was a little over 11 million, I believe. Is that what you recall, Stacy? 13.7 million was the fund balance as of June 30, 2023. And so in the current year, there was a projection to use 4.9 million of fund balance. We're seeing, based on expenditures, they probably will not use the full 4.8 million. So anything they don't use will just go back into the fund balance. So there will still be sufficient fund balance to fund the 5.5 million.
And then when you said that we weren't spending, we weren't able to spend the funds, I'm guessing that you're referring to the period where we put that on hold while litigation in another part of the state was resolved?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Weaver?
Thank you. The road maintenance fee, that's what shows up on our car tax bill?
Yes, sir.
What is that, like $35 or something? 25?
20.
20? Okay, 20. Okay, thank you. I'm not counting for an increase, Paul.
All right. And the next few slides are looking at each fund from an expenditure standpoint. So the previous slides, we're looking at all the revenue. So this is just really a summary based on each special revenue fund and their expenditures. So again, with a budget, a balanced budget of 230 million. We did have some requests to fund new positions within the special revenue funds, and they're shown on Slide 37. The first few items were, oh, I apologize, the first three are actually enterprise funds because they're airport, so we've already talked about those. The last four items are related to special revenue. So you'll see a request for a fire code inspector and then a new crew for road maintenance. So this ended up being six positions, and I'll actually invite Dr. or Director Maloney to talk about these new positions and what the new crew will be doing in road maintenance.
Thank you, Director Wilkinson. Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. Following on the county mission, where the county government is dedicated to providing exceptional public services through effective planning, proactive leadership, and inclusive government to ensure that all residents, visitors, and businesses have equitable opportunities and improved quality of life today and in the future. The roads and drainage division of Public Works will be committing to fiscal responsibility, planning for growth through inclusive and equitable infrastructure, and establishing operational excellence. For the first two goals of the county strategic plan, we'll do that by increasing our capability in roads and drainage to pave county roads. And we currently have a roadway paving machine and rollers for compacting new asphalt, and we do some small projects with that that is capable of doing more, and we have, we will require additional employees to meet that mission. Goal six in establishing operational excellence is to reduce our response time for customer service requests. Over the past 10 years, there has been a growth in county maintained facilities. In 2012, when we were at the same staff level we are now, we had 525 miles of paved road, and in 2024, we have 655 miles of paved road, which is a 25% increase. The increased efficiency, we're also looking for that, the increased efficiency of time to send the proper resources to job sites, add additional employees that will investigate and call on the proper resources, and employees that will also inspect completed jobs with quality assurance checks. Getting into the details of how we do that to increase our capability, we would split the asphalt crew into a prep crew and a paving crew to handle larger paving issues, and two additional, that will require two additional equipment operator three and two additional equipment operator two positions for the asphalt crew. This will become a total of 14 positions, and we have the org chart to show you after this. For reducing our response time to customer service requests, we propose to add an additional group to handle investigations. This group will allow RDM to faster, respond faster to a citizen request and give our crews an idea of what to inspect at the site before they arrive. They will also communicate with the citizens to give them a time of repair. This will consist of an existing manager and then a new crew leader and equipment operator three, which will become a team of three. For the asphalt crew, in yellow are the additional positions that will lead the asphalt paving and prep crews. And also to note, they also are known as the asphalt and concrete crew. So they have sections that go out and replace and repair curb and gutter as well as asphalt and concrete roads. For investigations, we have an existing manager, and we have a crew leader and existing and a new equipment operator three proposed for the investigations and quality assurance. We've been piloting this with our existing positions, and it is working quite well. So we would like to actually formally allow this to occur. Thank you. And now I would like to introduce ACA Thomas.
Madam Chair, if I may.
You recognize ACA Thomas.
If y'all will recall, or as you probably know, the county collects 3.5 mils annually that is set aside for capital improvements. The way these funds come in is we actually bring them into our budget. We have capital items that are included in the budget for line items that are necessary during the year, such, you know, for things like our EMS department, small equipment, things of those nature, of that nature, under $50,000 that we spend from there. At the end of each fiscal year, the remaining funds from that 3.5 mils are then rolled into an assigned fund balance in our general fund. We began this process about three years ago when we, when we thought that this would be a better idea for maintaining our capital assets going forward, as the ordinance does say that that's to be maintained for our equipment and facilities needs. As of the end of 2023, we had about, we have about $18 million that's been assigned into this fund balance. So as you can see, this is collecting, netting about $6 million a year. We are working toward a 10-year capital improvement plan. There's a very large list that the county has, but I like to call it a wish list. So we're trying to drag it, to pull it down to something that is more manageable and more achievable, so that we can actually consider not only the current year funding, but what would be needed to actually address these needs moving forward. So the first slide that you have in front of you is the funding by source and how we propose to fund these projects. So I would draw your attention specifically to 2025. And the reason that I draw your attention specifically to 2025 is that these are the funds that we're proposing to spend from these sources this year. Moving forward, it's called a capital improvement plan just for that reason. It is a plan, it is fluid, and it moves on an annual basis as we realign priorities and as our, as those priorities may change. So this year, we actually estimate that we will have about 58 million, 58.5 million dollars in capital projects that will be going on here. You may also recall that last year, we actually added two additional project managers. We have one of those people in place currently and are working to hire the second so that we can actually, from the facilities and maintenance department, carry forward all of the facilities projects that need to be taken care of. If you go to the next, to the next slide, this actually breaks down your capital improvement plan by department. Currently, as you know, we have quite a lot of projects that are going on continually at the Alvin Escland Detention Center. We estimate we'll spend about another, about 10 and a half million dollars this year. These numbers may fluctuate just a little bit, going one way or the other, depending upon what we're able to achieve. Clearly, the faster that we can, that we can address these projects, the more, the better that it is. And if we do have to come, if we do, when and if we do have to adjust that, we would be bringing that back to council. Also remember that any of these contracts that we issue to do work, do this work, come before council to be approved. So you would see those to become, come back as we're, as you're doing this work. So you will see this in a couple of different formats. Number one being contracts and agreements that will come to you for approval, and number two would be updates to the strategic plan and capital improvement plan that we, that we provide you on a quarterly basis. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have from this. We will get into details on the next slides.
Also Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Sheriff's Department, 11.3 million, of course, that's in addition to the 47 million proposed for operating.
Yes, sir. If you recall though, we're completing the 911 center or the public safety complex. It's currently classified as a sheriff's department project.
So that's basically 911 center?
Pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Chair?
As you recognize.
On the funding source graphic, I'm just looking at the fiscal year '25, you've got the 16, 20, 22, and 23 bonds there, and then amounts for each one for that fiscal, fiscal year '26, it picks up, and there's like that line item of unfunded, that's pretty big numbers.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk through that?
Unfunded are requests that are being brought to us to consider, and we're in the process of evaluating them. So what that means is that while we're looking at the project for a feasibility standpoint, we also don't know how we would fund it, so we will be looking for ways to fund those.
And on those line items of 16, 20, and 22, there's, there's money, fundings there, dollar amounts for fiscal year '25, and after that, nothing. So that's the end of the, fiscal year '25 is the last year that we'll have any funding from those bonds?
With the exception of the 2023 bond, we will actually be completing that last project there in 2026.
So there's no more funding coming from those years' bonds?
No, sir. We would have completed, completely exhausted those bonds.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide is projects by category. We have a million dollars in equipment, 49.3 million in facilities, 1.38 in information technology, 1.3 in general improvements, and 5.4 in vehicles. The next slide actually shows you the general fund improvements. I know this is a little bit busy, but this shows you fund, things that are, we are actually funding out of that millage component that we discussed, the assigned fund balance. The largest things that you'll see there is we are doing some improvements over at the Judicial Center. We've got about 2.3 million dollars in improvements that we would like to do there. As we discuss the plans for the Judicial Center going forward, we do need to make sure that it is capable of being operated currently. Additionally, we are working on a parking, we'd like to propose to work on a parking lot across, directly across the street currently where the elections department is hosting early elections right now. Of course, you're aware, they will be moving in the next 18 months. And as we do that, we would like, we propose to remove the buildings that are there and to make that an upper parking lot. This will be coupled with the first phase of the 2020-2000 improvements process we're proposing. There's 2.3 million dollars that's also allocated there. That would be for external and internal improvements to this building as well as 2000 Hampton. We believe that this will be a phased approach over about four to five years, as we have 2000 vacated by most of their, most of the tenants that are there, and then re-equipping that building to be able to house other county employees. Also of interest is about $250,000 to remove the old antique mall on Broad River Road to make that property usable. About $175,000 for an automatic gate and driveway at Powell Road. $750,000 for, I'm sorry, $750,000 for an additional work, some additional work on our new ERP system, and then $5.4 million that will go toward vehicle equipment for this year. If there are no questions, I'll move on to the hospitality and general fund funded projects. As Director Wilkinson pointed out, there was about one point, about almost $2 million that was already allocated for a parking lot at, a new parking lot at the township. There is an additional million dollars needed there, potentially 1.2 million. So we're, we're actually funding that from the general fund. Additionally, we're proposing that potentially next year, there'll be some other improvements at the township that you all may consider, but again, we're just focusing on FY '25.
ACA Thomas? Can you go over that one again? So you're saying the parking lot, we're pulling out general fund, not out of hospitality?
There was one point, there was one point, I think it's actually $2 million that is in the general fund presently that was allocated previously for that parking lot. It's not enough money to get a paved parking lot. So we would pull the remaining 1 million out of hospitality tax to complete the project as a paved parking lot.
Is it possible to use hospitality altogether to pay for it without using the general fund? Or because we allocated it in general fund, we have to stick with it? Or because we allocated it in general fund, we have to stick with that?
Let me check, let me check for the source of those funds. If it was a bond, it may be a little more complicated, but I can certainly check that and it would certainly be a consideration.
I'm going Weaver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Thomas, thank you for spending so much time with me on the phone today, going over the budget. I do appreciate that. On, I can't remember what page it is, but under it says improvements, capital improvement plan, asset management, five hundred thousand utilities pay go. Asset management, that seems kind of vague. Do you know what that is, asset management?
Currently, we don't have software to manage the assets in our utility system. So we're actually looking at an ERP system that will allow us to manage all of the assets. You know, that includes your lines, your meters, all of those assets that belong to the utility system.
So it's basically software?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward, the last page is really, really busy. These are the other funding sources that we have and the projects that we're proposing to do this year, many of which you've actually seen previously. As we've talked through some of them, because some of them are from our ARPA funds, from grants, from bonds. Some of them are included in the general fund, but these are just the the improvements generally that we plan to make this year. And that we would be requesting. Many of them are bond funds and let me indicate to you that bond funds are allocated specifically. And while we are asking council to acknowledge those, the bond funds have to be used for the projects that they're allocated for.
You recognize this, Newton?
This is an administrative slash paperwork question. So the book that I'm looking at doesn't have these last pages of slides.
They were left on down. There should be some loose sheets.
I will scour my dais more vigorously next time.
Anytime.
I do apologize for that, but many times these, these pieces are still in development as we issued the RBB. But we do try to give it to you at the beginning of the process.
So Weaver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the item twenty eleven Hampton parking lot, a million dollars, is that for the public and employees or just employees or?
It would actually be a public parking lot.
Good.
That would actually improve access and provide more ADA accessibility to the building.
Because I tell you, I don't, I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I do get complaints about people can't find parking, they have to drive around the building and all that. So that's, that, that's, that's a million I could let go, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
ACA Thomas, I just had a question going back to the original. What is this, page forty five? What, funding source? And you said, look at fiscal year twenty five column because that is what, when we vote on the budget, that is the amount we are approving. And the remaining number would be adjusted as we go. That's what we're agreeing.
That, that's actually the projects that you're considering. So keep in mind that these projects still may change, but these are the amounts that we believe that we would request. Of course, if we have to make any further request, because we do come back to you because of the size of these projects, they would be adjusted at that point in time. But this, this is just approving the plan, not necessarily a budget.
And as a whole, if we commit to using this twelve million from the general fund, where does that place us with available reserves per day? How does this impact us using the twelve million?
You, you should still have an additional, right now we have eighteen million, we will be adding to it again at this, at the end of this fiscal year. So you would still have a consistently remaining balance of about twelve million dollars in assigned fund balance, not unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is what the rating agencies are looking at you to consider, which that's the one where our policy says that we have between twenty and thirty five percent of prior year expenditures available at any one time.
So if we approve this recommendation, we will not be impacting that?
That is correct.
Okay.
If there are no further questions, that is all that we have at this point.
Any further discussions? ACA Thomas, can you just remind us of what's next? Or is that?
Actually, may I ask Director Wilkinson?
Director Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So upcoming, this is our last work session for the, for the year. But upcoming, we do have the public hearing on May twenty third, starting at six P M. Second reading is now on June fourth, so that's our regularly scheduled council meeting day. Third reading is June eighteenth. And just a reminder for you guys, the motion period will end on Tuesday, May twenty eighth at nine A M.
Thank you, colleagues. Anyone need, so you heard this, our last work session. Does anyone need any additional information or request any additional needs?
All right, thank you. And as always, if any one on one meetings with Lori and I are always welcome. I know we've already met with a few of you with specific questions, so we're happy to do that. And any questions that have come up through these work sessions, I'm also working on a document to, to make sure that is provided to each of you for just those, those questions that came out through the work sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, anyone? All right, we are now at item number six.
Your turn.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Brennan?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Baron? Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.